Start. Ms. Tucker, may I start?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Thursday, February 25th, 2021 Washington Elementary School District Governing Board Meeting. Ms. Tucker, would you be kind enough to do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, President Adams. Governing Board members present, Governing Board President, Mr. Bill Adams, Governing Board Vice President, Ms. Nikki Whaley, Governing Board Members, Mr. Larry Herrera, Ms. Lindsay Peterson, and Ms. Jenny Abbott Baardy.
Thank you. And if we may, we'd like to take a moment of silence and meditation and think about our community and all those that have been affected by the COVID. Thank you. Dr. Stanton, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, Mr. Adams. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. May I have a motion for the adoption of the February 25th, 2021 Regular Meeting Agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera. May I have a second, please?
I second.
Go ahead.
Jenny.
Jenny, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. May I have a motion for the approval of the February 11th, 2021 Regular Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. May I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the motion passes. Now we're on to current events and acknowledgements. Governing Board?
This is Jenny.
Hi, Jen.
President, sorry, I'm sorry. And I just wanted to share with you all, I was able to spend some time this week. First, it was a very busy schedule, but first of all, I went to Sunburst on Monday, and I'm attending, I'm trying to get to every single school at some point between now and the end of the year. So I was able to spend time at Sunburst, and I was able to spend time with the principal and also the other staff, but I hate to just say only one person, so I'm just going to say everybody was wonderful and very gracious, and I was able to look around and I had a wonderful tour and an excellent time there. Also, I went to Ironwood and learned a lot about Ironwood and the community around the Ironwood Elementary, which is interesting because my father actually opened up Ironwood Elementary a bazillion years ago. And then I went to Desert Put Hills yesterday, which was great. I attended Desert Put Hills when it was a K-8 school and spent time there. Saw the new tower, cell tower, and a bunch of other things there, too. And then this morning, I was over at Acacia. So I really appreciate all of the time that everybody gave to me and all the wonderful things that are going on at school, even without all the little chairs there yet, but I just really appreciate everybody being so gracious to me and showing me around and teaching me about the schools. Tomorrow, I'll be going to Chaparral. And also, I spent time with Kathy Thompson for Budget 101 on Monday afternoon, and she will be greatly missed just by all of the knowledge that she has. So it was really helpful and at least to begin to educate me on the whole financial component of the district. So I had a wonderful week so far.
Thank you. Board members, anybody else?
This is, oh.
Anybody?
Yes. President Adams, this is Nikki Whaley. I just wanted to acknowledge all the staff that volunteered at the Vaccine Pod the other weekend. My husband and I were able to go out and do a shift and observe folks after they got their shot, and I will say, you know, there were some hiccups and some people were in line for quite a long time, but everyone was really pleasant and happy to have received the vaccine and feeling like they're a step closer to being more protected. So I just, again, want to thank all of our staff that volunteered, our sister district, Glendale Union, for hosting and for coordinating, and of course, Mr. Wing and his staff for helping coordinate and communicate out the information on that pod as well. It was, it looked like really well organized, and again, people seemed really thankful. So I was glad we could participate and support our staff in doing that.
Thank you. Lindsay?
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, President Adams. I just want to echo what Nikki was saying. I also was able to do the Vaccine Pod. I went on Sunday, though, and it was definitely quieter, but still, like, the positive energy that was there from our teachers who were volunteering and just the hopeful, you know, like, this is the first step towards, actually, it's not the first step, it's one of the steps towards getting us to where we want to be, which is back in the classroom with our kiddos. So, and of course, my heart is always happy when the two places I love, Glendale Union and Washington Elementary, can come together and work together on things. So that was a great experience. And then also, I just wanted to express my appreciation to all of our staff that are running our onsite learning opportunities for our students. My own children have taken advantage of that this week, and they just were welcomed and kept safe and given opportunities there at the schools that they attended. And so I'm just grateful for those staff members that are showing up every day to keep those kids with those positive experiences, keep them motivated for their online learning and their experience. So, thank you.
Thank you. Herrera?
Yeah, I'm going to be participating in the 5K Wellness on Sunday, so for those of you listening out there, yeah, I'll be running, so I'm going to be trying to do the whole thing live. So hopefully, we'll get a lot of the yearly 5K event. Kind of hoping to do a 10K this year, but hopefully, it's going to be very, very, a lot of people out there are going to be engaged in it and hopefully, to see a lot of the same runners that we did last year, because last year, I had to do it again on COVID times. So kind of hoping to see a lot of you guys out there. Hopefully, you're listening, and see you guys Sunday, 5K. So anybody wants to run with me, I'll be starting at Cactus Park and hopefully, running, ending at one of the elementary schools. So if you, you guys in the audience want to come out there and do the 5K, get it over with early in the morning, come by. That's it. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. I want to also, if I may, I'm going to echo Ms. Peterson and Ms. Whaley in regards to vaccination, the shots. I was, I had an opportunity to go down on Sunday myself. It was, it was great to see all the volunteers and everybody there, and what, and big thank you to Glendale Union and Glendale L and also Fries for contracting with us. And it was, it was just good to see everybody, and again, many thanks there. Today, I had an opportunity to visit Cactus Run and spend time with Principal Michelle Hall. We had a pretty in-depth conversation of what's been, what it's been like from the beginning of COVID to now. We discussed the Cactus Run community and the challenges facing our teacher staff and my neighbors. We had an opportunity to visit with Ms. Kelly Clemson. Boy, I'm going to watch that name. Clemson, I think, forgive me. Kelly did a great job. She teaches fifth and sixth cross-category functional students. She has two instructional aides, Tawana and Elena, and has empowered them to run the groups virtually and meet students' IEP goals. Her roster has nine students, and she is often running three groups at once with different Google meets to ensure students receive differential instruction that aligns with the student goals. She allowed me to look over her shoulder and watch what she was doing. The students have become proficient at sharing their screens and using differential platforms like Jamboard and, and it was an interactive slide. I can go on and on and on about it, but I just can't thank her enough. I can't thank Principal Hall for this opportunity just to say hello, and she walked me around so I could say hello to most of the staff, the healthcare and food services and the external staff. The campus looked beautiful. It was just a wonderful visit, and it just felt great to be back on a campus. Jenny, I know you're doing it. Thank you so much for out there, you know, you're representing us. When I'm out there saying hello, it's on behalf of the board. So I know that everybody works, and it's difficult to get out to visit districts, but when one of us go, we all go. On Thursday, I had a chance to have a virtual meeting with Sarah Bennett and Lori Fox with WDEA. It was great. We had a great conversation, just getting to know each other all over again, and I very much look forward to working with them, and I thank the WDEA for all they do for our children in our community and our staff. And that's what I have, and Dr. Stanton, it's now yours.
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the audience, it is a busy time. Kids are learning. Thank you for those of you that shared that, and our teachers and our staff, all of our staff worked so hard in this environment. I too would like to mention that to WDA, we just had a wonderful meeting with them. They did donate three food boxes, and I wanted to give a shout out to Sarah and the team. They were only needing two, but Dorothy had a need, and they were able to fulfill it. So kudos to the WDA for that as well. I want to thank everyone that was a part of our closed pod, Glendale L, Glendale Union, Washington, staff, board, all the folks coming together. We gave out over 1,600 doses, which is great, and we, both by, it was open for charter schools, private schools in the area, and it was just a very great opening. Obviously, the next one will be coming March 20th, and we look forward to that as well. Wanted to say thanks to everyone on President's Day. It's a holiday and so wonderful opportunity. I hope people had a chance to celebrate our presidents. I do want to also thank Lydia and Justin and their team. We have 79 student teachers, and our administration are trying to interview them. Obviously, you get student teachers, and you hope that they are great, talented up-and-comers, and so we are definitely interviewing. It's quite a few. It's the most we've ever had, and that's a good problem. I just want to share that's some of the innovative ways that Washington works, our bridge program, our paid student teaching, our opportunities with our multiple universities, and I can't say enough to Justin, Lydia, and the whole team for that as well. Thank you, guys, so much for what you do there. We did put out our commitment survey, our commitment for our families, and so I do want to thank Lori, Josh, and the whole team that worked on that commitment survey along the way. And then I do want to give a shout out. Our, our team actually went before the, part of the State Board of Education, Riosolato, is looking at school districts next year and their opportunities to offer kids distance learning, and Teresa and the team presented, a lot of the folks on BLT presented, and they said that they liked ours, that was different than most districts, because our teachers developed the lessons, and that we were told that they were much appreciated, that our lessons were very engaging, and that we prepared not only for our regular ed students, but our ELL and our special ed students. And I know that sounds like just typical Washington, but we never want to miss the opportunity to say what special work that our staff does here as well, Mr. Adams. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks so much. Before I move on to public participation, board members, we're going to go ahead and schedule our next board meeting for March 11th to be in person. Should anybody have a problem or they're feeling uncomfortable, I'm sure that we can accommodate, and I would ask that you reach out to Ms. Tucker. With that, Ms. Tucker, do we have any public participation?
Yes. President Adams, we did receive a few requests for public participation. I will begin with the first one.
Nice and loud, Ms. Tucker.
Is this better? Mandy Terry from Mountain Sky Junior High, she would like to address the board regarding the reopening procedures. Ms. Terry says, until it's known if vaccinated people can pass COVID to their loved ones at home, and as of, and as of today, it's still not known, why is it okay to send teachers back into the classroom? If the governing board of this district won't meet in person with HIPAA air scrubbers in a room with 10 to 20 people, why is it okay for teachers to be in the rooms of 30-plus kids for multiple hours every day? What will COVID-19 notification procedures and protocols be on campus? Who will be notified of cases among faculty and students, and when? Will contact tracing be employed? What will quarantine procedures look like this quarter? Thank you for your time. The next request for public participation is from Catherine Haywood, and she's also from the Mountain Sky Junior High area, and she wants to address the board regarding the revision of the WSD reopening school plan for 2021. Please consider the following in your discussion about the return to in-person learning. Does the CDC allow schools to sacrifice six feet of distancing if HIPAA filters are in place, or it, or doesn't it, in fact, require that both things be in place in order for schools to open safely? Does our district intend to follow CDC guidelines for the return? Does our district plan to continue to follow the metrics put out by Maricopa County or not? What are we doing to ensure that these groups are not put at risk, at, I'm sorry, excuse me? What are we doing to ensure that these groups are not put at undue risk? Employees, unvaccinated family members, students, and the students, unvaccinated family members? Please consider that the plan that you're approving requires teachers to be in classrooms of 30-plus kids for multiple hours every day with no promise or even likelihood of social distancing. While this is being asked of teachers, the governing board of this district will not yet meet in person with a HIPAA air scrubber in only 10 people. Please consider how this discrepancy affects our staff's view of the return and the effectiveness of the HIPAA filters. Thank you for your time. That is the only two we received, President Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker, and we'll go ahead and pass those over to Dr. Stanton to, to address. So with that, I'd like to go with, for a motion, well, before I go for a motion, would anybody like to pull any of the Consent Agenda items?
President Adams? I'd like to pull, thank you, President Adams. I'd like to pull consent item G, the Approval of Director of Human Resources, please.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, then. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda A, B, C, D, E, F, and H, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Was that Lindsay?
Yes, that was Lindsay.
Thank you. I'm sorry. And may I have a second, please?
I second.
Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And now, Ms. Whaley, would you please move? Item G, please. Consent Agenda, item G.
Thank you, President Adams. I just had some questions with, before the motion, I just wanted to ask some questions, please.
Please.
I was wondering if Mr. Wing could explain to us the difference between, we just recently, last week, our last meeting approved the Executive Director of Human Resources position, which was a new position, or a position retitle. If he could maybe just describe some of the key differences between the two positions?
Certainly. Good evening, President Adams, Governing Board, Dr. Stanton and guests. I would say it's similar to the Assistant Principal versus Principal. There are going to be a lot of like duties. They're both going to have a hand in recruiting and retention, evaluative processes and oversight, discipline, compliance. In this particular one, it's going to oversee Title IX Sexual Harassment Compliance, which was approved in August by the U.S. Department of Education. I'm not sure if you participated in any of the trainings with ASBO, but it has, and it will put a considerable weight on school systems throughout the nation. That would be probably the main difference. The intent is to hire the Executive Director first and allow that Executive Director to be involved in the hiring of the Director to, you know, to bounce off each other's strengths, and so there could be some, there's, there could be a possibility where the Director is more involved with the classified side of it, or the certified side of it, depending on the, you know, the strengths and background of the Executive Director.
So my follow-up question to that is previously, aside from the Title IX, the executive, what is, what we're now calling the Executive Director was responsible for all of this. So this is taking some of the responsibilities from the Executive Director and then adding the Title IX. I know Title IX is new, but.
Right.
So essentially, this is just taking some of the responsibilities that your position is already doing and giving that to someone else, and then adding the Title IX.
Correct. I mean, maybe it's easier because of a different Consent Agenda item, but I would say majority of those who are closer with Human Resources would say that we've been understaffed in HR for quite a long time. I have various, we have various districts who, even smaller than us, who have multiple admin in HR. You know, some, some districts close to our size, like Phoenix Union, for example, have four HR Directors or Executive Directors. They have 6,000 more kids. Scottsdale has 100 more kids than us, and they have three administrators in HR. Our neighbor, Glendale Elementary, is half of our kids, and they have two admins, so honestly, this is probably a long time coming.
Okay. Thank you for that. The last, the last piece is, I noticed in the org chart that this new position would not have anybody reporting to them, and so that would be an additional person. We have over 13 people, I believe, reporting to that. Is, is there a possibility that that person would supervise?
That's the subject to change, depending on the, I would allow the Executive Director to determine that part of it. So if you're hiring somebody with a more focused certified part, they may, they may supervise, like, Ms. Lydia Garcia, our certified recruiter, Mr. Carpenter, who handled, who's our certified analyst, things like that. Conversely, if it's more classified focus, they would, they would supervise, you know, a different, different part of the HR crew.
And then the last thing I think is important for folks to know is how this is being funded. This is a new, we've never had this position, so this is a new FTE. How is this being funded?
We are limiting to FTE in the district level, not administration, but it's still under administrative cost, and we're decreasing a calendar from 12-month to 10-month on another position to help offset the costs.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Wing. President Adams, with that, I will make a motion to approve item G, the Director of Human Resources Position Description.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Herrera, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
And I don't hear any nays. Is there any nays? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, board. Ms. Tucker, can you go back to C so I can? Thank you. And at this time, I would like to thank the Arizona Diamondback Foundation and the Washington Education Foundation, yay, WEF, for their, their kind gifts. And with that, I'll move forward to information and discussion items. And. So now, review of external audit, and Dr. Stanton?
Ms. Thompson, would you like to make the introductions?
Thank you, Dr. Stanton. Of course, I will. Excuse me. Tonight, we have, we are going to present to you the actual findings and the information regarding our external audit that is done for fiscal year 19, 2019, 2020. That ended June 30th, 2020. Tonight, I have with me here at the meeting Brittany Williams, who is from Heinfeld Meach. They're the firm that does our audit. We're under contract with them right now for our audit. Also included and available to answer questions on how we may proceed after the audit is finished and how we address our findings is LeAnn Gallagher, who is the internal auditor here that works in my department. Brittany?
Thanks so much, Kathy. President Adams, members of the board, Dr. Stanton, thank you so much, everyone, for having me back this evening. A little different than it looks last year. I think it was one of the last in-person meetings I had last year, was coming to the Washington Board Meeting to present the results of the audit. So definitely looking forward to getting, getting back in person shortly. I think it's on the horizon. So with that, I know that there are a couple of board members that are new to the board this evening, so I want to, please encourage you to ask questions as we're going through. I'm open to, you know, any questions that you might have. This is a lot of information, and so I'll stop after each report and open it up for questions and make sure that you have that opportunity. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen because I think it'll be easier to go through the reports that way. And we have several different reports that come out of the audit that we performed for Washington Elementary School District. The first one is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So this is the financial statements. It's a very large document. As you can see, it's about 177 pages. So you definitely don't have to read this cover to cover. I will point out that starting on page one, you know, this is addressed to citizens as well as the governing board, and this is updated, oops, sorry about that, I don't want to go too fast. It's just about five pages. It's updated by Kathy and Dr. Stanton each year. Talks about the local economy, what's going on, long-term financial plans, the awards of the district, and so it's just a, it's a nice narrative as to what's going on with the district, and doesn't really have anything to do with the finance stuff. Then that's followed by two awards that both represent, an award from the prior year, the ASBO Award and the GFOA Award, both are given to entities that are able to submit their audit reports, they're, they're CAFERS by December 31st. Washington Elementary has always been able to do that. Finance has pushed really hard to make sure that they're ready. It basically means you have to be ready a lot earlier, otherwise, the deadline is March 31st, so you have to be ready three months earlier and submit a quality CAFER with all the various elements, including extra sections. So kudos to Finance for always being ready and prepared for that. The next thing I would like to point out is just our auditors' report. This starts on PDF page 24, and in this report, we talk a little bit about management's responsibility for the financial statements, the auditor's responsibility, what our opinion is. Here's our opinion paragraph. We gave a clean opinion on the financial statements, saying that nothing was materially misstated, so it looks really good. There was a change in a reporting principle this year, not a major change, didn't have a huge effect. And then we just kind of conclude that and talk a little bit about some standards that we have to follow when we're doing this report. I'm not going to go too much further, except just to say that this whole section of the management discussion and analysis is really good because it gives a year-over-year comparison of what changed financially for the district from two, from last year until this year. And so if you wanted to get into some of the details and get some knowledge as to why these fluctuations happened, this 10-page section might be a really good place for you to do that. I'm going to jump back to the back here. This is the statistical section, and this is kind of interesting. The first few pages are financial trends and things like that, but then you kind of get into some demographic and economic information, and the statistical section has 10 years of historical data for the district. So it's really interesting to kind of see how the district has changed over the past 10 years. If you're interested in that, that's the last few pages here of this report. So with that, I'm going to just pause and ask if anybody has any questions on the CAFER, the financial statements, or audit opinion in general.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, hearing none, I will continue. So, and there's a couple of other different reports that we do as part of our audit as well. We do a federal audit, a federal compliance audit, based on the federal awards received by the district every year, and we also do a state compliance audit, which is internal controls that are established by the district in accordance with guidelines set forth by the State of Arizona Auditor General's Office in something called USFR documents. So that's the difference between these next two reports that I'm going to go over for you. One is, one is for the federal section and one is for the state. Both of these do get uploaded to the state, however, and they look at both of them, but this package in particular goes directly to the White House and the feds. So I will talk a little bit about the single audit, and we have a couple of letters in here. It's a lot of legal language, you know, clean opinions across the board. the board. This page right here is helpful because you can see all of, this is called the SIF, or the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And it represents the amount of federal expenditures expended by the district for the fiscal year that we're talking about. Tells you which department it flowed through, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, but then everything was kind of passed through the Arizona Department of Ed. So the district spent $40.7 million in federal awards this year, which is quite a bit. And what we have to do as auditors is we have to come in every year and assess these programs and do a risk assessment based on some guidance that we're given, of course, and determine which federal programs we're going to test for the year. This is the other page I wanted to point out very briefly. This is our summary of everything that we looked at. Schedule of Finding in Question Costs is what it's called. First, we talk about the financial statements. We talk about what type of opinion we had and if we had any findings, either significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or non-compliance. We gave a clean opinion, which is called an unmodified opinion. And then we have no's all the way down. And then we talk about the federal awards that we tested, the federal programs that we tested. This year, we tested the Child Nutrition Cluster and the 21st Century Community Learning Center grants. And so those kind, like I said, those rotate every year. And we gave an unmodified opinion on those major federal programs and we had no findings. You can see no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, and no non-compliance. So the, the district qualifies as a low-risk client. There's been no findings this year. There were no findings in the prior year. So definitely kudos to management and everybody in the federal grants department and finance and all the way. Because having $40.7 million of expenditures in federal awards and testing the bulk of, you know, those transactions and taking a really, we do a lot of test work over those programs and the transactions that take place. And, and there were no findings to report. So, so that's, that's incredible. And this is the best type of report that you can get. So if there's any questions on this single audit reporting package, the federal compliance piece of our audit, I'm open for those right now.
President Adams?
Please.
First of all, Ms. Williams, I just want to say, every time you come out here, I just really appreciate, this is a lot of information, it's a lot of documentation. And every time you come out, I just really appreciate that you not only know what all of this stuff means, but you also know what we will want to hear and what's important for us to understand and, and really cut through to where we can focus and, and so that we don't get lost in the weeds. So I just wanted to give you kudos for always providing a really succinct and easy-to-understand report because auditing is not easy, especially when we're talking about finances and we're talking about federal programming. So thank you for that. I don't really have a question. I just wanted to give kudos there. And I also wanted to give kudos to, and echo what Ms. Williams said, our, our finance department and our grants folks, Kathleen and her people. I mean, it really is impressive. There are districts that have far less federal dollars than us that are struggling to maintain not only appropriate use. When we're saying this, it means not only tracking how we're spending the money, but also using them in compliance with what they're supposed to be used for. It's a lot. It's a lot of work. So I just want to give kudos to all of those departments for ensuring that we are meeting those federal requirements, which are plentiful. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Brittany?
Anyone else? Okay, I'll keep going. Just a couple more here. So this is what I had talked about and referred to earlier as the Uniform System of Financial Records, the USFR Compliance Questionnaire. This is issued by the Arizona Office of the Auditor General's Office, and it consists of oh, about 200 individual questions related to various categories of, of a school district, internal control environment. It goes through governing board policies and management procedures, conflicts of interest, student attendance, purchasing, attendance, bonds, travel, credit cards, IT. It, it covers pretty much every area. And what we're tasked with as auditors, I'm not going to go through every page here because I know that Leanne sent you a very detailed listing of all the findings in here. So what we're tasked with as auditors is answering every single question, either yes or no, or NA. And if it has a no, then we have to explain why not. And so it's usually out of a sample or something along those lines. And we give a brief explanation as to why the finding was there. For Washington this year, there was just a sprinkling of non, we call them non-compliance issues, and those were in that document of the audit exceptions detail that Leanne had provided to the board. You can see there was one on travel, one on disbursements, one on transportation, one on payroll, a few in student attendance, which is typically where we see more of the findings. And then just a couple of other, just one, kind of one here and there in each category. And I would say for, you know, the size of Washington, the size of the district, that that's, that's pretty common, if not, just, just did a really great job. And, and nothing concerning, nothing overly concerning. There's not like 10 findings in attendance, you know, it's just a few. And so it's just human error, you know, so you're never, you're never going to have this be completely 100% yeses. It's just every year, there's going to be different areas to kind of look at and, and be aware of. And, you know, if they're, the, the finance office, Kathy and Leanne and the team are really good about, okay, well, what schools did we look at this year? Because we do rotate which schools we look at. We usually look at three each year and continue to rotate through those for our selections. And they'll say, okay, well, do they need more training out there? What can we do to help them? Is there an egregious problem that we need to address at this particular site? And so they're really good about, about that. And again, this document gets uploaded to the state, not to the federal government, and then just provided to the district as well. But I don't have any concerns with this report as far as, you know, a district this size, one of the largest in the state, and, and just a few no's here and there. It really looked quite good. So are there any questions with, with this document? Okay. Last one, and I will wrap it up. This is a letter of communication directly to the governing board from us as your auditors. It's a required communication under auditing standards, and it just kind of goes through some various items about our audit and what types, you know, that management is allowed to make estimates and what type of estimates does management make? Did we discover any difficulties in the audit? Did we have any disagreements with management? Did we have to make any audit adjustments, things like that? And so there were no concerns from our perspective, pretty standard letter here. And then we kind of end with ethics and fraud and that, you know, who's responsible for fraud. And then we provide the Fraud Prevention Checklist at the back, which is from the ACFE, which is the American Certified Fraud Examiners Association, and to help you establish some good fraud controls at your entity. So that's just a required communication from us. If there was ever anything that I needed to disclose or something that came up, then I would definitely provide it in that document there. So those were all the documents that I had. And I just, before I kind of opened it up for ending questions from, from anybody, I just want to thank Leanne and Kathy and the whole team. And, you know, they always do such a great job. They're so cooperative. We really, you know, it was an interesting year, of course, but we got through it and we got all of the amount of information they have to provide for us during the audit. You know, they worked really hard to wrap everything up in a timely manner and everything went really well. So it's amazing what we can do, you know, even in, even in these times. So I really appreciate all the work that they do. And I appreciate your team having me here tonight to present the audit results and that you put an emphasis on it. I, I really appreciate that. So I am open to any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, board members. Okay, hearing none. Ms. Williams, every year you got, you come in, and this is the most exciting report that I, that we get. And and the fact that there's not, not many, if any discrepancies, again, goes back to Kathy and her team and everybody else and what they do in keeping us straight and narrow. And as Ms. Williams had mentioned, on behalf of the board, thank you so much for a very entertaining report.
You're welcome.
So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move forward. But before I do, we have a number of people, we have a good number of people that are, are, are watching this, 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 this board meeting. And I want to take a second just to acknowledge I did not congratulate Mr. Justin Wang on becoming the Assistant Superintendent of HR for Mesa. And so, Justin, we are so proud of you. You earned this. Go get them. And so again, congratulations, sir. And I'll go ahead and move on now to action item 4A, Employee Benefit Trust. And I believe that's Dr. Stanton, yes?
Mr. Adams, members of the board, I'll ironically turn it over to Mr. Wang to give the update in regards to EBT.
Thank you. Mr. Wang?
Good evening, governing board and audience. Are we gonna, Shannon, are we gonna have it on the screen? I'm sorry. I think I, I don't think it's a funny joke, but I bring this up every year. The only thing guaranteed to go up every year is, is insurance in our age. And this year is no different. We're projected to have an increase of 6.2% increase to our health insurance budget, which equates to a little over a million dollar increase to our budget. Just to let you know that I've talked to some districts, there's one that's as high as 21%. The national average is, it hovers around seven to eight percent. So we're a little bit low and fortunate as far as that part of, a part of it, but still it is an increase. The district is similar to last year. The district is contributing $750,000 to offset that significant cost, which leaves, I think, about $214,000 that we had to make some changes to our health plan to, to offset the remaining balance. So a couple of things that's going to be increased. We're going to maintain much of our, the no premium cost for single coverage for the high, high deductible healthcare plan. We're going to maintain the $700 HSA Health Savings Account if you elect the health, high deductible healthcare. We're going to maintain the deductible of $2,800, but we will be increasing the out-of-pocket maximum, maximum by $500. We allow employees to have two, two choices. The other one's the Banner Health Network. We're recommending a main, we're going to, we recommended in the trust board to maintain a $15 premium to employees per month for single coverage. Maintain a deductible again for this plan as well, and increase the out-of-pocket maximum by $500 to $4,700. When it comes to dental coverage, and we're certainly not the first, other districts have, have done it ahead of us, but for the longest time, we've maintained a zero premium for single coverage for dental coverage. And to help offset that increased cost, we do have, have to provide, or we are recommending an increase from zero to $2.5, or excuse me, $2.50 per month for the basic dental coverage for the single. And then the same $2.50 for the buy-up option if one chooses to do so. But ultimately, the recommendation is to contribute $750,000 to offset the one, little less than $1.1 million increase to our insurance budget. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Board members? Okay.
Adams, I have a question real fast. Sorry. This is Lindsay.
Yes, please.
So I see that you're talking here about the single coverage. I'm just wondering if you could maybe talk about how that would affect people that are covering their families or spouses on that? Do they, do they take that 7% increase? I'm just not sure how it works.
The dependent coverage, it does go up 6.2%.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and is, are there any other questions, board members? Hearing none?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Justin, the, the, what else did we get in the last few years? What did we get covered besides the, the EAP program and some other stuff that, what are the programs that we get, like health and wellness wise, is part of the package? I know we switched health and wellness providers. There was another company that came in last year. So what, what, what else did we get? Did we get, we got mammograms and we got some other, so we didn't have, right? I know we were the only tax-collecting agency in the state that probably wasn't amongst other, some other school districts in the state. But what else did we get with that?
We do other things that mitigate health insurance and potential use. A few things, we do have an employee assistance program that we implemented, could be wrong three years ago, but around that time, for employees to access. We did implement Teladoc about three to four years ago, in which both plans, there's either a zero cost or a lower cost to access a doctor over the phone for certain reasons, than going to visit your primary doctor or urgent care. Last year, starting in January, we did, had started implementing an employee wellness program. And speaking about 5K, Mr. Herrera, we, we did our first 5K, which was amazing for the first start. We got a lot of kudos, even from our wellness provider on that. Unfortunately, two months into it, we experienced a pandemic, and so it kind of slowed us down. But Ms. Jenny Champion, our Human Resources Department, who takes on that wellness coordination, as the governing board should know, on a weekly basis, we are providing various opportunities virtually for employees to continue with the wellness participation based on their needs and wants, like the virtual 5K upcoming this weekend. So those are probably some primary things we put, put in place. We do provide flu shots. We do have the mammogram come in for employees as well. And it's, you know, as we continue to expand our employee wellness program, there's going to be a lot more opportunities. We do have a health and wellness committee. Again, we're just kind of stunted with the pandemic. It's tough to do wellness when we're not together. Part of having an employee wellness program is the, the motivation each of us have with our colleagues and our peers to encourage and participate in the wellness program. So we will continue to expand that as we move forward.
And what about the, the flexible spending, the cafeteria plan? Is there any talk about expanding into that? Well, IRIS calls it a cafeteria plan, but it's, it's like flexible spending. Some, 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 some agencies call it cafeteria plan, but the IRIS, technical terms cafeteria. Bill calls it his slush fund, like cafeteria plan or flexible spending plan, health, flexible health, Metaflex, you know, those two plan. No, Metaflex is where the employer pays for you to not use insurance, because I know some of the employees use their spouse's insurance. So is there any talk of something like that, like a Metaflex program to giving like a stipend for, you know, like $25, $30 for employees that don't use the city, the district's health plan? And then also the flexible spending? Have you guys, have you guys looked at that?
Sure. For the high deductible plan, we do provide that $700 Health Savings Account. For the Banner Health Network, employees have, and I can, at least for a decade, have been able to contribute to a flex, a flexible spending account. So that has always been in place. And during these times with the stimulus packages being approved, they've actually increased the amount people can, employees can contribute to their own flexible spending account. The program you alluded to, I'm not as familiar with this, so I would, you know, appreciate if you could follow up and maybe share some information with me on that. I don't know about the, with that Affordable Care Act, when it got put in place, there's a lot of intricacies about who's a primary, what's the primary insurance? Typically, the employee, their coverage is going to be their primary, not their spouse's insurance that they may have. That may be a secondary. So I, I think I would just need to go a little deeper with, with the program that you, that you alluded to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Here we none. There is a recommendation on the table that the Governing Board approved the increasing. In fact, I'll just go ahead and move it. I'll make a motion that the Governing Board approve increasing the employee benefit funding level by $750,000 effective the 2021, 2022 school year as presented. May I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Here we none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And any, any ayes? Not hearing any, the motion passes. Thank you, board. And thank you, Justin. I'm going to miss you. So that brings us to Action Item Number 4B, Interest-Based Negotiations IBN. And the IBN is, Justin, it's you again, it looks like.
Good evening, Governing Board. Ms. Tucker, did you want me to pull my note up so I can scroll through it? Or did you want me to just give you a cue to scroll down?
You can too. I have it up. Thank you.
I can do it? Okay. I'm going to convert it for, for my thing, if you don't mind. I'm assuming everybody can see this. A couple of things, for those, for those in the audience may not be aware, but our, the Washington Elementary School District applies interest-based strategies as a method to handle our negotiations regarding compensation and working conditions. Interest-based negotiation, strategies focuses on win-win solution, focusing really on the interest of why. Why is a certain part or issue important to us? Few other pointers. I want to thank the IBN team for their hard work. They put in a lot of hours, particularly after school. So thanks for their, their efforts. We do have nine certified, nine classified, and three administrators who are voting members. And each one of the classified, for example, represent various employee groups. And as far as a teacher, the same thing, different grade levels, special ed, middle school, et cetera. And then thank you to those who are, act as a resource, including myself. Thank you, Mr. Wing, for the IBN team as well. Scrolling down, each year, the Governing Board provides us interest that when we are looking at every issue and variety of issues, that not only do we review the IBN team's interests regarding input, that we also confer and affirm the Governing Board's interests as well. And this is not in any particular order. And it varies between compensation and working conditions. There's going to be multiple recommendations within. The first one is district anomalies. And our district has a practice of, with the term anomalies, to focus on a position or certain types of positions or employee groups, maybe beyond what we do with other employee groups. And a few things that we have to consider. One is Proposition 206. When voters approved that in Arizona, they approved minimum wage increases from, I believe it was 725 or 785 to what is now 1215 an hour. But by doing so, for many systems, including school districts in Washington Elementary School District, it caused a lot of pay compression. The other thing to consider is the governor's 20 by 2020, where teachers deservedly received 20% in three years. They deserved more, but deservedly, they got the 20%. But that in turn costs some compression matters, because we weren't able to give all employee groups a 20% increase in three years, for example. For the minimum wage component, you see, you've seen some continuous employees who received a 35% raise in a five-year period where other personnel did not get that amount. And last reminder on the Proposition 206, it was not, it was not funded, so we had to do it within the means of our, our own budget. So, beginning in 2018, 19, IBN was task tech. How can we avoid some of these, some of this pay compression, particularly pay compression related to pay grade? And in 2018, 19, the IBN team recommended the board approved addressing transportation. Some of you recall bus drivers, bus assistants, the maintenance crew, most of the maintenance crew, the HVAC, the electricians, the plumbers, our mechanics, and the kitchen staff. I'll give you an example. On the kitchen staff, there are four job titles. There's the food service helper, food service clerk, food service unit leader, similar to assistant manager and a manager. And if IBN and the Governing Board did not approve it, three of those four positions would all earn the same starting rate. So the, the lack of the promotional opportunities for, for what's considered a higher pay grade job would not have been there. So IBN did a great job in board approving that. This past year, IBN looked at other anomalies, social workers, OTPT, psychologists, district and school admin, and speech pathologists. All along these last, those two years, and 17, 18, teachers received that 20% raise, minimum wage was increasing. So these were just the anomalies outside of those two components. This year, the IBN is recommending that we focus on positions we really, we have not been able to address over the past couple of years, or who are not addressed during the 20 by 2020, or the minimum wage Prop 206. And it's going to be really related to school and district office personnel, health service staff, or health service technicians, for example, our site facility managers, our plant foreman, for lack of better terms, and some of the trades we weren't able to address in 1819, our grounds crew, our irrigation crew, things like that. Because of the office, there's plenty of job titles. And so we didn't list them, but we are listing the pay grades. Anything that starts with 4,100 are office-type personnel, whether it's a school office tech, it's the payroll clerk, it's the front receptionist, it's the account, accounts payable, our health desk technicians in our IT or MIS department, things like that. And you'll see here, we're recommending that we go from a starting rate to a new starting wage next school year. For example, school office technicians, which is under 4,120. A few years ago, it was considered a promotion if they went from like a paraprofessional to a school office tech. They would receive about a $2 raise. But with minimum wage increasing, the parapro and the office tech both start at the same rate. We have, the pay grades collapsed. And so what we're doing is, we bumped it up by, you know, a dollar rate, so there is at least some component of that promotional opportunity. We also added an ending rate, ending wage, you know, what's the range of starting and ending, and the percent in between. And you'll see that varies by pay grade. Similar to the past couple of years, the higher the pay grade, the more ceiling there is, the larger the, you know, the percentage between the starting and ending. The 4,300s are operational and service employees. Because we've addressed many of those positions over the last two years, this is more the facility manager, I think, print shop, warehouse workers, just some miscellaneous ones we have, we weren't, grounds crew, we weren't able to address past couple of years. The 4,500s are school hourly support. This is because we've already addressed some, like paraprofessionals have gone from like 914 an hour starting to 1215. Actually, we started 1222. These are some other miscellaneous ones, like the health service technician, our library and media specialist, to name a few. The PA and the PSN are nursing supervisor roles. And then the 35, 36, and 3800s are, are office exempt employees. So they're the ones that are not eligible for overtime. Our payroll manager would be an example of that. And likewise with the hourly pay grades, we're recommending that we increase their pay grades as well. And then finally, the last one is the school office manager. I think in the last three years, we've hired 40 office managers. The jobs evolved. Big time, it requires a different skill set than maybe a decade ago. And right now, the starting, and they are 10 and a half month, by the way, their starting salary is about $33,000. And IBN is recommending we bump it to $39,000. And again, apply a percentage to, a percentage to determine the start and the ending salary range. So those are just increasing the starting ranges and applying a percent for the ending rate, wages. And then I put a little legend down below for an example. There were some pay grade changes we made. Rather than change their starting salary, we just put them on the next pay grade that may not have been in use. And you'll see that here. And then as far as the office manager, we just determined to create its own pay grade for the school office manager. Like we've done in the past, we are recommending what we call a compression relief system. When you bump the starting salary up, you don't want to place your seven-year employee and your first-year employee all at the starting rate, plus the new hires next year coming in, starting at that starting rate. You'll have a different type of pay compression, where you're compressing years of experience in a role into one salary. So we implement a schedule where we recognize your years of service, and we want to avoid placing you on the starting salary. For example, the school office tech, if I'm at 10 years, I don't want to place that person at 1330 an hour, the starting salary. I want to at least give them some separation. And we would love to provide a lot more separation than we can. That's why it's called a relief. We don't really address compression. We just relieve it or avoid it. You know, that person may go to, you know, 1360 an hour. At least there's some separation. There are some individuals who, based on that compression relief system, may lose money. We obviously wouldn't want to do that. We have some who would not get any raise or maybe a penny, just because that's where they fit in that slot. And what we're doing is, we're recommending that the individual gets placed on that compression relief system or a 2% raise, whatever is greater to that employee underneath those pay grades. Most often, we recommend effective date of July 1. Last year, we recommended an earlier start date, our effective date for social workers, if you recall. The year before, bus drivers, because of the critical need. We're recommending that we make this move for, for office managers starting March 1 next week. And then the other, all those others in the pay grades on July 1. I probably want, because there's a few more recommendations that are a little complex, you know, I can hold for questions maybe now on this component of it. Would that be okay, Mr. Adams?
Sorry, I was muted. Please.
President Adams, I could ask Mr. Wing. With, and I can't scroll, I want to scroll up on your slide, but with the, where it says like percentages, for the folks that were, so for example, in these 4,100 pay grades, if they were below 1330, they're going to move up to 1330. If they were here for several years, that's where you'll do that calculation at the bottom?
Correct. So if you're a first-year office tech, I'll use this one as an example. If you're a first-year office tech, the starting salary next, or wage would be 1330 next year. If I'm a first year, I'm at 1335. If I'm a second year, I'm at 1340. If I'm a third year, I'm at 1345. Not a big, a great separation. That's why it's avoid or relief, not address compression, because that would be, it would be very costly. And school systems unfortunately are not going to probably be able to do that. But it gives you some recognition and versus putting everybody at that 1330.
And then in terms of the salaried one, first of all, the office managers, and it goes to March, is that just, that's of course, what's the word that I'm looking for? But it would be for the portion of the year starting March first, right? So they would just get a slightly higher, or the new, the new rate, whatever that new rate is. But if their salary, do they, that's where they do the hunt, that's where those hundred dollar figures come in, right?
Correct. Because I can't do, yeah, I can't do cents.
You don't have to do the math. But if you are a fourth-year office manager, you would get the new 39 plus whatever years of service that would be. Okay. All right. Thank you.
And you're correct. Just to clarify, if you're a office manager starting this year at $33,126, you're going to get that pro rate to?
Pro rate, that's the word I was looking for.
28th. And then on March 1, you're going to get a pro rate of $39,000 for the remainder of the year. And then on July 1, you'll be at 39, or 39,200 for next school year.
Thank you.
Any question? Do you want me to move forward?
Yes, please.
The second thing is Proposition 206 implementation. This is something we're going to have to do every school year. Because 206 requires, based on inflation percentages and all that, that they calculate, minimum wage will be going up. It is usually every January that it will go up. So far, our district has only, has applied it the July before. So the start of the school year, rather than change an individual's hourly rate January 1, we just started the school year at their new rate. The state does not provide us advance notice of what the minimum rate, wage will be January 1st, 2022, so we do have to project that. When we made a projection last year going into this year, we did not project a pandemic. And so I think that made some impact on the inflation percentage, but it went from $12 to 1215. We actually projected $12 to 1222. So what we did is IBN applied the same percentage from 12 to 1215, applied it, and we're recommending a 1230 an hour start, starting rate, minimum wage rate, July 1. There is a possibility, let's say if it's 1231 or whatever, on January 1, we're going to have to, you know, make some edits. But this year, we were over and we don't anticipate it, even if it was to be anything significant. Because we're bumping the starting salary, we do that compression relief system as well. Kind of like alluded to up above and gave that school office tech as an example. And we just do 3 cents. Part of it is just because of affordability and how much we had to spend on the Prop 206, which I think has exceeded over $5 million already that we had to do within our budget. And so we're recommending, again, 1230 an hour starting rate, that compression relief set, system in which if you are a first-year parapro, you're going to go from 1222 you're making now to 1233 next year. It is applicable. By the way, everything you'll see on here is based on information as of February 1st of this school year. Any questions on the minimum wage change? I'm hearing none. I know Mrs. Thompson has shared with you in the past that we're down 2,200 students, and that has made a huge reduction in our revenue and projection going forward. We're unable to provide base salary increase for all employee groups. Although IBN is recommending that we do it for those positions we haven't been able to address over the past couple of years in Recommendation 1. However, we are recommending two different one-time stipend components. The first one, Recommendation 3, One-Time Stipends. We're recommending that all employees get a minimum of $1,000, assuming they're full-time stipend. And we're, within this one-time stipend, we're recognizing some longevity by putting in an increment, kind of like that compression relief system. We're putting in an increment where the second-year employee may get a little bit more than the first-year employee who gets, or and the 10th-year employee gets more than the ninth versus the eighth, and that increment is $40. Again, it's some increment. You'll be surprised of what $10 does on changing that, how much. Um, you'll be surprised of what ten dollars does on changing that, how much cost that, that changes everything. We did ask, uh, so for example, I put on here, a second-year employee will receive one thousand forty dollars. First-year employee will receive one thousand, second-year one thousand forty, third-year one thousand eighty, et cetera. Obviously, the new employee would not receive anything. We did cap it at two thousand, so the range is really one thousand to two thousand, depending on consecutive W E S D experience. So that cap reaches, when you get to about twenty-six um, years of service. There is a, an exception, and this is a little complicated. The last couple of years, um, the last couple of years, IBN has put some one-time monies, a larger one-time money stipend to those who were not being addressed. Because they were receiving higher base salary increases than the other groups. For example, the school office tech example received more one-time money last year because they didn't get the same raise as uh, the teacher, the social worker, the admin OTPTs. Applying the same thing this year, those, if you're approving recommendation one, they're going to get a base salary increase that others aren't going to receive. And so the exception is basically saying that those who get a base salary increase in recommendation one will get zero or less than a one-time stipend uh, in recommendation three. And an example would be, and I keep going to the school office tech, uh, just because that's the first pay grade we went over. If the school office technician is in his or her first year this year, at first, the um, the one, the first-year employee would get a thousand dollars. But if their value of their two percent raise or that placement on the compression relief system is eight hundred dollars a year, their one-time stipend would be reduced to two hundred. Uh, for many, as you know, it comes out to the same dollar amount, but a base salary increase typically carries with you every year. So the, the following year, they get to keep that eight hundred, where they wouldn't have that two hundred dollar one-time stipend or other employees have too. So it's more beneficial or advantageous to have it on a base salary than a one-time, hence the difference. Um, there are some other eligibility criteria. You have to be, you have to return, you have to be employed during that pay run, but that paycheck is uh, spread out. Um, for this one, one particular recommendation three, we are recommending that the payment gets paid the first paycheck after fall break. Fall break is not a holiday pay for many folks. And so when they return, they'll have a, at least uh, they're a one week out of a two-week paycheck plus the one-time stipend. We also are recommending a retention stipend in which all employees who are returning, assuming they're full-time, get a thousand dollars, including office folks who are impacted and other employee groups impacted in recommendation number one. So uh, if you're a first-year teacher, for example, and you're returning next year, you're going to get a thousand dollars from recommendation three and a thousand dollars from recommendation four. If you're a halftime teacher, you're going to get half of that. Uh, if you're a full-time parapro in your first year, returning next year, you're going to get a thousand dollars from recommendation three and a thousand dollars recommendation four. If you're an office tech and using that eight hundred example on, on the pay raise, you're going to get a two hundred dollar stipend from recommendation one and a thousand dollars from, from recommendation four. So basically, you know, all employees full-time returning will get at least a thousand dollars total. Uh, one times, one time stipend. And maybe just because it's quick and then I'll, I'll, I'm open for uh, questions. Uh, teachers who uh, do instructional duties after school or being paid twenty-five dollars an hour, summer school, uh, after school. For whatever reason, in IBN, we never thought during the past couple of years, when teacher salaries went up twenty percent, we never thought to increase that. And so we're recommending that um, we increase that twenty-five by twenty percent and make it thirty dollars. Most of these stipends are paid through grants and uh, and uh, all those who are the grant managers are able to uh, take on that increased hourly rate. Now open for questions.
Board members, anybody have any questions?
President Adams?
Ms. Whaley.
Thank you. Um, uh, I just have a question in general with the, the IBN um, process. So we provide, as a board, we provide um, our interests. And of course, and they're in no particular order, but of course, uh, providing salary increases and retaining staff is always on there. Um, but all the recommendations are, it has been in the past, it's only on wages and nothing else. Uh, and I'm just wondering why there's never any recommendations for how we can um, do some of these other things. Um, is that just not part of the conversation? Or is it, you only have so much money and we only have money for increases? And if you want to do anything else, then we can't do increases? I mean, how does that conversation go? Because I've just noticed the last few years, there's never any other recommendations or interests that they come forward with in terms of working conditions or um, environment or uh, you know, potential learning gaps or focus on equity, there's never anything else. So I'm just questioning kind of, why is it only these that come forward?
This, these that come forward uh, are financial expense that the board has to approve. We do have two different subcommittees, we call them, under IBN. Basically, your, your full, large IBN group splits into two. One subcommittee is a salary subcommittee, which is mostly what gets taken to the governing board because there's a cost associated to that. The other one's the working edition uh, survey. So for example, um, promote an environment that encourages professional development for all staff. We are, we've done a needs assessment on classified professional development. That's, that's an area of focus for many districts, including ours. And we did a needs assessment with classified. We even asked teachers to do a needs assessment for what they believe their classified staff that they work with need. We did it with administration also. Uh, can't lie, COVID kind of stunted some of, some of that um, as, as some other things. Um, so we are planning and make arrangements on how we can uh, provide professional development. We've had discussions on the S R two dollars, on whether or not can we pay individuals to come in earlier than the start date of the work calendar to provide PD? Uh, for, for example, the classified. So there are some things that don't require governing board approval that IBN still, still works on. There's other things they also did not recommend that did not come here as well. Um, mostly salary related, but um.
Okay, I just think it would be interesting in the future because I recognize that this needs approval. But maybe in the discussion information, I mean, it would be nice to hear their thoughts on these other priorities that the board has set forth. So that, that can help inform us in terms of um, as we move into identifying goals or priorities or evaluating um, and looking at things. I think that that would be really valuable information because this is a, a body of people that are repres, are supposed to be representing our staff that would give valuable insight to this board. So I've just, you know, have been disappointed that uh, it only, only this has brought forward in the last several years. But I understand now that's because it requires um, passage. Uh, I would really like to hear what they have to say about some of those other things. And I understand we don't tackle all of the interests every year, but like, for example, what you just explained with terms of the PD. Um, that would have been, you know, interesting information to have um, going forward, if I can make that suggestion.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. The other consideration too are, these are interest, not options. And so the board is not saying that IBN has to focus on all of them. They're, they're saying that when you're dealing through certain issues, you need to um, consider your interests that you determine, the whys and also the governing boards. So it's not that they look, take this list and go, we're going to, what can we do here? What can we do here?
Right.
They're looking at interest. So let's say employees never brought up professional development, I'm making this up. There, there's not, that, that would not, that would, when we reflect not bringing that issue up to the interest, it would, there would be no match um, on that. So, so again, this is interest, not options. And so not everything is, is focused and dealt with on that.
So then I guess I would turn that back to say, how are the interests, if they could do the crosswalk of the thinking of how this recommendation takes into account our interests? That would also be helpful as well.
Mr. Wing, do we not discuss this when we have our executive sessions? Don't we, we scrub it pretty good, don't we? We go pretty deep, right?
Well, I can't speak what we talk about in the executive session, but I was just going to point, thank you, uh, questions.
No, I apologize. You're right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the correction. Ms. Whaley, good questions. Um, may I move on to somebody else? Thank you. And Mr. Arera, you're up.
Yeah, so I was just going to speak to the, the fact that we actually do get um, one, any clarification. We actually do get a whole uh, plethora of items that, you know, we, we, interest-based negotiations. The way it works is, you know, the teachers ask for what they want to, uh, what they want to talk about. And, and basically, it comes down to every year, we've been looking at this for the last five seasons that I've been here. And basically, it, it's, my understanding is, pay is the number one, is the number one uh, item that uh, staff wants. And uh, it's understandable, you know, which also gives us the impression that uh, working environment is, 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 you know, it's going, you know, it's not that bad, or at least it's, it's uh, you know, it's amenable. So I just want to mention that, that we do get um, other items such as professional development, uh, working environments, healthcare. There's a, there's, I mean, there's quite a bit of stuff that, that uh, you know, anybody out there is listening to this, if they can actually talk to uh, their staff at your school or somebody else, or maybe they come to the, the meeting and then, you know, ask for those, or look at the ones on here on, that's on the screen, that there actually, there is, um, I mean, there's actually one right now, the second bullet point is focused on equity gaps. So as you can tell, there, there is a lot of uh, of that talk happening, um, not just behind the scenes, but also within work group, work groups. There's so much consensus building these. But I think the reason why there's just, hey, you're seeing pay tonight, because that's the number one uh, you know, hot issue that everybody wants. So, you know, I wish there was a way to target, to, to show the, you know, the, the last three, four, or five years that the IBN team has recognized and recommended a, a lot of these things because they're there. You know, there, it's not that we're not offering, you know, day schools or, you know, or anything else that you may have heard. We are. It's just that this is the number one thing that, that everybody's come across and everybody's, you know, you know, they realize, hey, we really want money. So, and that's very, very understandable in today's environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And uh, Mr. Wing, thank you very much also for uh, protecting us with my silly question. Um, board members, are there any other questions?
Uh, President Adams, I have a question, Mrs. Lindsay.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Wing, I was wondering if you could just talk about, uh, I have two questions. So number one, um, you said that the uh, the one-time stipend is go in after fall break pay. Um, so when will the retention stipends go through? Um, for those teachers? And then I guess I just also wanted to understand why it's two separate stipends? Like what is, like, to me, they look very similar, right? Like, they're only going to people that are coming back next year. Um, you know, they're, they're, the pays are a little bit different, but like, they look like they're going to the same groups of people, basically.
Sure. I probably failed to mention that the, this recommendation number four, the retention stipend, is on their first check on their, of their work calendar.
Okay.
So if you're a um, a teacher, your first paycheck will be in August, you'll, you would get this stipend. And then the paycheck after fall break, uh, you will get that, that other stipend. It's a funny source, is really the difference
Okay.
um, of the two, of the, of the two. The part about retention stipend, you know, IBN really considered that we want to retain all employees, whether you're a first-year or a twenty-year employee. And that's why everybody received the same, assuming your full-time is prorated if you're half or something like that. But everybody gets the same amount. And it doesn't matter what your job title is, whether you're a school principal or a full-time parapro or bus driver, you're going to get the same amount. The other one-time stipend with the more of a carryover dollars, um, you know, IBN in the past, prior to the past couple of years, you know, has tried to tie some longevity component to it, even if it's a little bit um, to recognize folks who have, who have been here uh, in the system.
Okay, thank you. And then just one more question about the, the second stip, the one-time stipend. So you mentioned that the people that are getting that, you know, the raise this year because they've been kind of missed over, their, their one-time stipend is going to look a little bit different. So I just wanted to clarify that that is consistent with what's done in the past. If we were getting a one-time, if everyone was getting a one-time stipend and then a group that was getting a raise, that would be consistent.
It's definitely consistent over the past couple of years when, again, we can't give everybody a twenty percent raise or, 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 or what, or whatnot. So, but we can target certain positions and so it just takes a little longer. So yes, over the past couple of years, those who we did not address received a larger one-time dollar than those who were addressed. So the teacher, for example, received one less, less one-time dollars the past three years because they received at least a five percent raise. Where the office staff received a greater amount. This year, the teacher is not receiving that, so they're going to get the greater one-time stipend where the office personnel are getting that base salary raise and they're getting uh, less dollars. Uh, this information does go in employees' contracts. And so every employee who receives a contract will have the exact amount for both stipends. And then those without a contract, our support staff in particular, get a letter of continuation, basically, and it'll, it'll share um, their both amounts. It actually shares the exact date of the payroll. I actually don't know, off the top of my head, the, the one after fall break, for example. But it'll actually share that date so they can, they know and can anticipate when that will, will come.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Okay, hearing none. I have the um, agenda item before me. And without objection, I'd be happy to, to make the motion unless somebody else wishes to. Okay. With that, I recommend that the governing board approve the interest-based negotiations IBN team salary recommendations as described in recommendation one, two, three, four, and five as presented. May I have a second, please?
A second? This is Nikki.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none, motion passes. Mr. Wing, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And board, great questions. So that brings us to we're into action item four C, revision of the W E S B reopening of school plan. And that one, Dr. Stan, I'm going to hand it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience. Um, tonight, we are bringing before you a revision to our reopening plan. Uh, we last did this in September of twenty twenty. Before we go through the PowerPoint, I know that you received ahead of time our reopening plan uh, actual document. But um, just a couple of things. Um, today, we always meet with Maricopa County uh, on Thursdays at two o'clock, Ms. Fernandez and I. And today, they went over more updates from Maricopa County Health Department. Uh, Sarah Scott, the epidemiologist, discussed um, elementary schools can be in-person as elementary schools are less likely to transmit COVID nineteen. These are just quotes from the meeting today. Um, middle schools and elementary schools may go back at the same time if they have strong mitigation. We'll be going through this, by the way, in the reopening plan. I'm just sharing the quotes from the meeting today. Um, I did send to the board that Maricopa County Health and Arizona Department of Health have agreed to support those jurisdictions who are able to maintain a safe learning environment with regular school-by-school monitoring, regardless of the levels of community spread or transmission. And then Maricopa County Health recommends preferentially keeping elementary and middle schools open for in-person learning. If a phased approach is desired, Maricopa County recommends beginning with the elementary and middle schools prior to opening any high schools. And again, some of those quotes I've shared with the board, and then some of those came out of today. I just set that as a lens. I, I also would like to thank Mrs. Whaley. She met with myself and Dr. Bailey earlier today. And some of this presentation, uh, I hope addresses your questions, Ms. Whaley. We try to integrate it throughout. So if you would, uh, Ms. Tucker, this is what you folks have been used to. Again, this is a, we're talking about the reopening plan, but of course, I wanted to show people at least where the benchmarks are. If you look to the right, you'll see that our cases per hundred thousand did drop significantly. It was about two ninety-six, it went down to a hundred and forty-seven. Our percent positivity uh, did also decrease uh, from about sixteen point four seven down to eleven, about almost eleven point eight eight percent. And then the COVID-like illness, which I've always mentioned, is a county-wide statistic, uh, went from a little over five down to three point eight. And so I, I do want to just point out that, that they are trending down. Obviously, none of us Obviously, none of us can predict the future, but I do want to mention that according to Maricopa County and our own Joe Lessie, it appears that that trend should continue along the way. Ms. Tucker, if you'll turn to the next slide, please. What I'm going to present to you tonight comes from a document. This is actually right off it, K-12 school guidance for COVID-19 dated 21621. This guidance outlines mitigation recommendations for K-12 schools to prepare for and respond to community spread of the coronavirus based on CDC mitigation strategies. Next slide, Ms. Tucker. Couple of the key guiding principles that Maricopa County is providing is that Maricopa County Department of Public Health has partnered with school districts and vaccines. I mentioned it, in fact, many of you mentioned earlier, and vaccine vendors to ensure that every, every Maricopa County staff member working with the public, private, or charter schools has been offered the COVID-19 vaccination. We just had our first dose, and our second dose is due March the 20th. All students who are either at high risk for severe COVID-19 or live with someone who might be at high risk for severe 19 should be offered the opportunity to continue virtually. And then many schools in Maricopa County have successfully implemented a safe traditional learning scenario with mitigation strategies that include wearing masks at all times, maintaining physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible, and careful surveillance for COVID-19 cases and outbreaks on a school-by-school basis. I, before you go on, Ms. Tucker, that's fine. You can leave it there. No, it's okay. Go ahead. One thing I do want to be clear on is I know that Maricopa County has used the term hybrid. Hybrid for Maricopa County means some kids virtually and some kids face-to-face. I'll mention that later as well. That's different than the way we have mentioned in the past with our AB schedule. So I do want to point that out, and that'll explain some of the document on the reopening plan. The operating strategies, including these three essential components. I know Dr. Bailey is going to be spending extensive part of her part of this presentation, but we're going to consistently implement the five key mitigation strategies to reduce transmission of COVID. Indicators of common community transmission to reflect the levels of community risk, and then a phased mitigation and learning modes based on levels of community transmission. I will say on the phased one, I just mentioned to it, Maricopa County mentioned today that phased may not be necessary at the elementary and middle school levels. Ms. Tucker? So these five key mitigation strategies, Dr. Bailey will talk about how our schools will be completing those and enforcing those, is universal and correct use of masks, physical distancing, and then there's their, their definition, hand washing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining health facilities. Again, you'll see, and I think Ms. Thompson will be talking about our air scrubbers, conduct contact tracing, contact tracing, isolating, and quarantining in collaboration with Maricopa County Health, which we do that now and we will continue to do that. And schools providing any in-person instruction should prioritize universal and correct use of masks at all times, except when the kids, of course, are eating, and physical distancing of at least six feet to the greatest extent possible. Ms. Tucker? So indicators of community transmission. The first step in turning, when and seeing how to safely open re-schools involves accessing community transmission of the SARS virus that causes COVID-19. CDC recommends the use of two measures of community burden. Now, I mentioned earlier that Maricopa County has said that you don't necessarily have to have them at certain levels. I know we're going to be talking about that later, but the key is they're using the same indicators that we already had, that total new cases per 100,000 and the percent of nucleic acid amplification tests. Those are the, what we commonly call the cases per 100,000 and the percent positivity. These measures are used to assess incidence and spread of SARS, the virus that causes COVID-19, in the community, not the school itself. Risk is dependent on community levels of transmission and the implementation of school and community mitigation strategies, including the five that I mentioned before. And then just a little update, community transmission in Maricopa County will be found on the website or the dashboard, and they're going to update their dashboard to reflect the new metrics on March the 3rd. So what we're showing you today will show up on their metrics. Here is the CDC indicators and thresholds for community transmission. They have a, they've added a fourth one, so you can see they have low, moderate, substantial, and high. Phased mitigation and learning modes based on levels of community transmission. Communities should fully implement and adhere to the mitigation strategies to reduce COVID-19 to support safely opening schools for in-person learning. Phased mitigation recommendations to assist schools in making those decisions in conjunction with monitoring of local community indicators are available for schools with an emphasis on requiring, once again, the universal and correct use of masks. And Ms. Waley, definitely, you mentioned that today, and we definitely will be reinforcing that. Ms. Tucker? This is the current, now, we, if you guys remember, we asked for our community input, and so in front of you, we have where we are as of close of business today. It's each school, you'll see their current enrollments, the number of people who requested in-person, the number of virtual, varies by child. If you have multiple kids in your family and you want one to be virtual, say, and one to be in-person, that would be the variation. And then the not submitted is the one we're going after. Our schools have been calling all week and doing a fantastic job. I think Dr. Bailey updates on that later on. But next, hold on, Ms. Tucker, if you move it down just a touch. Ms. Tucker, if you'll move it down just a touch. There you go. Or there you are, right there. Then you'll see past the line, you'll see the percent in-person, the percent virtual, and then the percent by varies by child, and then the percent not submitted. We do have a couple of schools that are about 11% that are going to be calling again to try to, we want 100%, by the way. We want the not submitted to be 100%. That way, we know exactly what the families, and I, I did mention earlier, thanking Mrs. Mara Josh and that whole team that worked on the commitment surveys. It was better this time. But you can see each school there and their percent in-person and their percent virtual currently. Hit the bottom there, Ms. Tucker? You'll see as a district, if you hit it down, we're about 62% overall for in-person, about 36% or so for, for virtual along the way. And of course, then you have the 1% and 3% that are still out there, for lack of better words. Next one, Ms. Tucker? And we'll update this tomorrow as well as we get to hopefully our final numbers. So updates in relation to this, updates from my team in relation to the plan. So if you would, Dr. Bailey, could you discuss a little bit about, you know, our plan and some of the things that we talked about with Maricopa County and how it's impacting our plan?
Thank you, President Adams, Vice President Ms. Waley, and other members of the board, as well as people that are listening to this presentation. I'm going to actually touch on seven areas that primarily dealing with mitigation, but some of the other areas that we're dealing with in our school environment. The first one is considered as stated as health screening. What we're asking our parents to do, if their students, if their children are not feeling well, that they're showing some exhibit, some respiratory type of infection, to stay at home, to make sure that, that they stay at home and to care for their children. If they do come to school, before they even enter the classroom, we are going to check for, in their temperature, also informally check for any respiratory type of problems or, or concerns. If there is a concern, then the health office will be contacted, and the health office, the health tech will then take care of that child. The next area that we're really going to stress is hand hygiene, and we have all over the, the schools, how to wash your hands. We're really going to make sure that that is frequently done. That's, we have breakfast in the classroom, so that would be before they, they eat, after they eat. Also, we're talking about during lunch, any restroom type of break. Every single one of our school classrooms also have hand sanitizer. We have enough, our purchasing department has made sure that we have enough hand sanitizer in every single one of those classrooms. So hand hygiene is extremely important, especially with our young ones. We sort of make a, we actually role-play and make sure that they know how to wash their hands and to the best of their advantage. Dr. Stanton, talked a little bit about face coverings. That is critical, that, first of all, that our students and staff wear face coverings, wear masks. There are universal ways to actually wear masks. Over the nose and fitting in a tight type of manner is extremely important, and so we will be working with our staff and our students on universal mask type of wearing and following those guidelines. Another area that we're really looking at is the school campuses and the classrooms. What do those classrooms look like? So trying to maintain that six-foot distance as much as possible so that at this point, desks will be in a, will be situated to, in the same direction. Then we wanted to make sure that there's spacing for those desks in those classrooms. Each student's belongings will certainly be separated from anyone else's so that they will have their own belongings. We're looking at that we're going to keep the situation that we had in the fall where there is one-way hallways. We have markings as far as with tape or some arrows, and also some type of information that our print shop has actually given us some really indications of which way to go in the hallway. So we have lots of signage that are around to help and assist our students and parents. I'm sorry, our students and staff members. Also, with the school campuses, I want to make sure that, again, we talk about the air scrubbers. Thank you to both Kathy and Mike Kramer that we're able to find those air scrubbers and, and get them in time for our March opening. The, the other area that we really want to look at is the, that enhanced cleaning that goes along with the scrubbing, the air scrubbers. Disinfectant is in every single one of our classrooms and with microfiber types of cloth. We have also, thank you, Mike Kramer, has also made a checklist so that in every classroom there is indication when the disinfectant has actually been dispensed during the day. We're looking at that it would be dispensed between cohorts, dispensed on a regular type of basis. Also, part of that, that checklist that is in every classroom, that is hanging in every classroom, will also be when the high-touch areas have been cleaned by both the, the teaching staff and/or the custodial staff. So including with that whole type of checklist is how to actually use the disinfectant, so the proper use of those disinfectants. Along with the, the mitigation, it's extremely important that we follow all of the Maricopa County Health guidelines as far as working with our health offices. If there is any report, then that goes into, if it's a staff member, it goes into our HR department to follow through on the guidelines. They're in contact always with Maricopa County Health. If it is a student, then our nurses, we have two nurses that actually follow through with that. Contact tracing is extremely important, and we follow through with both the staff and with students. Again, with visitors, we are not allowing outside visitors. The only exception to that rule is if there is an MOU type of agreement with some of our, like Southwest Behavioral, but they would still have to follow all of our CDC guidelines when they come onto the campus. So those are basic, the basic types of areas that we're looking at. And the training from these areas, first of all, we had training in the beginning of the year, but we're going to follow up also with training, continuing on training, and that will be with our staff during the March 8th, time when our staff members will come back. The, the monitoring and making sure that, that we're following these mitigation types of strategies will fall mainly on our principals and our assistant principals. Also, our maintenance and our capital projects personnel will be doing checks, checks in the individual schools to make sure that the air scrubbers are being utilized to the utmost of their ability to, to make sure that the ventilation is to what it should be. So not only the principals and the assistant principals, but also our maintenance and capital projects department. And again, I just want to reiterate that our health services with our nurses and our HR department are following through on the Maricopa County guidelines, especially with the contact tracing. So that is the basic types of areas that we're, I'm dealing with when we are looking at the classrooms as well as the school building.
Next slide, Mr. Wing. Would you please update the board related to our reopening plan and some of the things that are, you are dealing with in HR?
That, and we'll be doing. Good evening, governing board and audience. Few things. One, Dr. Bailey mentioned a lot of it, but particularly staffing, the staffing component is impacted based on our reopening plan. Few things we do have, and as of last fall, we did share with all employees an opportunity to be considered for temporary accommodations with Americans with Disabilities Act, and we'll continue to do that. We do follow and adhere to all leave options, including the Family Medical Leave Act. The governing board on January 14th approved part of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, in which if an employee gets tested positive, we will provide a paid leave during that quarantine period, and we'll continue to do that, too. We are going to remind employees as we get closer to their return date on how to access our safety and health guidelines, our mitigating strategies. You may or may not be aware, but all employees were required to view them and understand them and sign off on them. They will be reminded that they do need to adhere to it, starting when back on campus, for those who are not right now on campus. And that includes some of the mitigating strategies Dr. Stanton and Dr. Bailey went over. I think tomorrow is, our plan is to get all parent commitments, and that will really impact, starting early next week, the staffing component of it. And it all, it all depended on parents and their selections per grade level, per school, as far as in-person or virtual. So we have different scenarios played out. We dealt with similar situations when we returned right after fall break, and so I'm excited to see what those commitments are and how we can accommodate the staffing component of it. I did want to thank again Glendale Union for really doing most of the facilitation on giving that closed pod for our employees on February 13th and 14th. I was proud to have volunteered on the 13th in the morning, and it was very busy, but individuals were very grateful for that opportunity. So thanks to those, and I appreciate your patience as we got to your first dose. Now, we are having that second dose on March 20th. I know that we have a number of volunteers for the 20th. I was informed today that Independence High School, that closed pod, because it's at Moon Valley and Independence, Independence could use more volunteers. So for those listeners, if you're willing to volunteer, please fill out that form that I had shared with you via email. And that is it for me. And on a side note, that's not really COVID-related. We do intend to get contracts out early next week to our teachers, administrators, and psychologists and other, those under contract. Thank you.
Mrs. Mara, would you please update the board regarding the reopening plan and your areas regarding online and traditional learning?
Absolutely. Good evening, President Adams, governing board members and community. We, you know, as you've been hearing us talk about over the last, you know, for the first three quarters of this year, we've been very excited and pleased at what we've been able to offer to our students in the form of online learning. And so as you'll see here in our reopening plan, for those families that do choose to stay online, we have that option, and we'll look forward to continuing to work with those students. Lessons are ready, and they will be prepared for the teachers to utilize in that platform. Once again, we are looking forward to having some special area options. Once we have our numbers in, the schools will be able to determine if they have the ability, you know, combination they can do of online, live interaction versus some recorded sessions with that. We know that's very important to continue to offer that in the online setting. We've offered social, emotional support throughout this entire time, and that's something that's absolutely key, and we will continue to do so for our students that are online. And then also, we're going to continue to offer special education services. We'll do some collaboration of what those case loads look like and how our special educators can handle all of that. And then, you know, once again, make And then, you know, once again, making sure that we have accommodations for our English language learners gifted, all of those pieces that we've had in place, we will continue for those students who choose to remain online. For our in-person learning, again, this will be five days a week. We're looking forward to have our students back with us. We will continue to utilize lessons that have been written by our teachers, and will be taught in those classrooms with additional support and working with some small group interactions and accommodations and interventions with the students. As Dr. Bailey mentioned, you heard all the CDC guidelines that will be in place. We'll make sure that we have safe learning environments for our students in there. And so when students are working together, we're going to work to cohort and keep them together so they're not interacting and mixing with a large number of students. And here again, the social emotional support will be ready and available for our students when they come. We'll have our social workers, school psychologists, our behavior support advocates. Everybody will be ready and prepared to support our students in whatever, you know, whatever their needs are when they come back, and we know we will have some. Once again, special education services will be available. Our English language learners, we will have things in place for them, gifted. We'll get back to as much of a normal routine as possible and really look forward to having that face-to-face interaction with our students that we know our teachers have missed and our students are looking forward to once again. We know we have some learning gaps to make up, and we are looking forward to having our students back with us. And for those that remain online, we also will continue to offer as much intervention as possible because we do want our students to be successful for the remainder of this class, for this school year. So with that, I will hand it back to Dr. Stanton.
Thank you, Mrs. Mora. Mrs. Thompson, how about an update on our reopening plan? I know we've mentioned the scrubbers, but I certainly wouldn't mind you mentioning those again, and some of the things that we're doing to support our staff in regards to reopening.
Certainly. Related to facilities, what we're going to do mostly will be continuing the types of items that we started at the beginning of the year. There's not a lot of changes taking place with the way we are taking care of the physical buildings. We're providing assistance to schools on tapes on the floor, sidewalks, signage to help people, remind them to stay as far apart as they can, giving routes with one way in our hallways. What we're also doing is ensuring that we have a good supply of all things that we need for cleaning, making sure that that is always completely stocked and ready to be utilized as necessary. We did have some hand sanitizer stations in the front offices. We are ensuring that we have sanitizer available for the classrooms as well as gloves for the classrooms for the teachers who are needing to do some cleaning in between while students in the classroom itself. We will have, like I say, encouraging people to bring their own water so that we don't have sharing of different things with water fountains and things like that. And the only new item that we're really starting this time in the facilities is, like they've mentioned earlier, putting in some HEPA air scrubbers in the classrooms. We have ordered those scrubbers. We've ordered 1,500 of those to be put in our larger classrooms where a number of students will be. The effort in that is to try to put them into locations where there will be a larger number of people. That would be classrooms, the cafeteria, you know, library, things like that. We have some protection already in our school offices as far as barriers for safety at the front desk, but we will also be putting the air scrubbers in that front office for if we have people coming in to visit. They said they would have those to us in three weeks. That would be like the week right before spring break, so we're crossing our fingers and hope that does occur, but that was what the vendor told us. In the finance area, not a lot different. We've been working all year long on trying to utilize, make the best use of the dollars that we have available. Because of all the things with COVID, we've had a loss of students, so we've had federal grants coming in to help us out with things, helping us out with purchasing all of the items that we need to do. Those filters have been, those scrubbers have been purchased with the Esser dollars, the, you know, the additional computers for kids, all that kind of stuff, and we have been utilizing the federal grants that have been coming to us. We will have received, once we apply with this newer grant, we will have received over $40 million in federal dollars that can help us meet the needs that we need to do for all of these areas and all the added safety things, precautions we have to put into place and everything else. Again, that's been very helpful in a year where our budget has been reduced.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And then just if you'll go to the next slide, Ms. Tucker. Just the front letter, as Ms. Whaley mentioned a little bit today, that sometimes people may not read the whole document, so we tried tonight to do a nice summary here in my letter, thanking our team, our families, our staff, for just the incredible patience in these unprecedented times. I do list, again, in case people don't go any further, the bullets related to students that are at high risk or with families at high risk, that they need to have the opportunity for virtual learning. Many of the school districts in Maricopa County have successfully implemented a safe traditional learning scenario with those mitigation strategies. And I know we've said that many times here, and we mean that because that's what we'll be enforcing. As you heard, we're going to train, and then we're going to enforce along the way. All schools must ensure a universal and correct use of masks. You heard Dr. Bailey reiterate that point, and we'll be training on how to do that, physical distancing, hand washing, and respiratory etiquette. Kathy just went over cleaning and maintaining the health facilities. We'll also keep the schedules. As you heard, Mike made those schedules originally, these checklists for our teachers to know when, you know, the rooms, they've done cleaning, and then, of course, Mike's team will also be doing cleaning in the evenings as well. And we do contact tracing now. We'll do contact tracing. Again, at the time, we worked very well with Maricopa County. Beth and Debbie and all of our health folks have been very helpful in that, and I do want to thank HR as well for their hard efforts. And then Maricopa County has partnered with school districts, we mentioned, and the vaccine vendors. We do want our staff to have the opportunity to get the Pfizer or the Moderna with our closed pod along the way. And so we totally appreciate everyone's support in this. We know that this is going to be different. I mentioned earlier, the reason we're not using a hybrid term here anymore is Maricopa County actually means that if you have some kids face-to-face and some kids virtually, you actually do have what they call a hybrid. So that's why we've used the in-person, face-to-face, and then the distance learning or virtual as the reference in here. With that, I will take, my team and I will take any questions from the governing board related to the updated reopening plan.
Thank you, Dr. Stanton and everybody. Board, questions, please?
President Adams, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
So I wanted to say, first of all, wow to all of our schools for getting that information back from the parents. So, you know, in a district of 20,000 students to only have 500 families that haven't responded, that's an enormous effort in, you know, just a little over a week. So that's awesome data. So my question was, do we have any idea how this compares to what our virtual versus in-person numbers were like in the fall? Is it essentially the same? Do we have more people that are coming for in-person or vice versa?
So I don't know if Ms. Fernandez or it was Dr. Bailey, but we did actually look at that, and extremely similar to what you saw in the fall, actually. The numbers, for example, we were looking at Lookout Mountain, very similar numbers. So it does appear that people have the same tendencies. And I don't know if Dr. Bailey, you want to contribute to that or not, but we did actually go back and look at the ones, pull the numbers, try to put them side by side as they stand. Dr. Bailey, anything you want to add to that?
No, we didn't think it was going to be about the same, but it really has been about the same, to tell you the truth. So it's very, you know, the numbers were a little bit different in the fall compared to now, but it seems that the same people that wanted to come back in hybrid, that were in hybrid, quote the hybrid that we had in the fall or that we thought was nicknamed the hybrid, are the ones that are coming back in the traditional model. So it's pretty much stayed about the same.
Okay. And then, so to kind of piggyback on that question, so does that mean, because I know there was a lot of movement, like with the faculty and with our students, to figure out, you know, if we have this many kids that are online and changing classes and all of that. So I would assume that means then that, like, there isn't going to be as much movement? How are those decisions? How is it decided who's going to be the online teacher? Are we going to just kind of go with the October results? I'm just curious what that process is going to look like for our teachers as far as determining who will be in-person with kids and who will stay virtual?
Dr. Bailey, you want to talk about how the schools are working on that? Or Justin, I'm not sure which one? I'll start with Lynn.
Okay, yeah, and probably Justin can also elaborate. The, our major priority is not to change students or teachers, I mean, that they would maintain their same teacher, but that may not be true for every single case. But that, we just actually put out a guidelines last night when principals are scheduling, and that was our first priority. If you maintain as much as you can. If there's a, if there's a situation that we can't, then we would have to look at it. Let me just give you an example. In one of, some of our smaller schools, we only have two teachers per grade level. So if the majority of the parents have elected to stay in-person, but maybe only five want to go virtual, we wouldn't be able to actually have, you know, that one teacher just work with five students. So then what we've developed is a process that would go into the district office, and we would look at the availability of some, another teacher actually taking those students. So the beauty of the program is that we have lessons that have been developed by our curriculum instruction type of department. So those are, you know, universal throughout our 32 schools. So, and kudos to the academic services department for actually producing those types of lessons. So even though it would not be, you know, we would prefer not to have a student actually have a different teacher, that may be the reality for certain situations.
Justin, you want to take it from there?
Sure. There is one group, those with the temporary reasonable accommodation regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act. It is priority that they are assigned the virtual teaching, assuming that is related to that component. That'll be the primary one. Just to add to Dr. Bailey's, what she shared, it's going to be, the remaining virtual teachers is going to be decided by the site level. The site will have the autonomy on it. It's going to be, I know talking to principals, a lot of it's going to be based on who are virtual teachers during the first semester, particularly when we returned and had the hybrid versus the virtual. But unfortunately, I know the numbers seem pretty comparable, like Dr. Stanton mentioned, but it's going to be dependent on each grade level in each school because there may be changes at one particular grade level that requires another virtual teacher in first grade, for example, at said school, or one less virtual teacher. So there may be some individual decisions made based on, you know, we can come up with probably a million scenarios, but on different scenarios that come in play with that parent commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members? Okay, not hearing any other questions. First of all, I can't thank everybody enough for such a strong effort. Hello?
I have a comment, and I think Larry's typing, and he might have a comment, too. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't see the hand. But Ms. Whaley.
He got there first.
Okay. Mr. Rara, do you want to go?
Sure. Hey, Paul, just a quick question for you. So we're talking about if the numbers seem to go down based on the county metrics. You're looking at after spring break? Is that what you're, is that what you guys are thinking? I'm just kind of curious, judging by what the whole presentation.
Yeah, the target date is March 22nd. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Whaley?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the entire leadership team and all of their staff. I know that there's been a tremendous amount of work coming up with this plan, thinking about the different mitigations, trying to comply with all the recommendations from CDC. I appreciate Ms., or Dr. Bailey for really pointing out that there are checklists that are going to be posted and used in order to ensure, because some of the questions I had is what does regularly mean? What does, you know, how will teachers know when that is? And my understanding is in their training, they will be told kind of like minimum of how many that, that would, you know, when those types would be. They'll be informed of when their classrooms were cleaned last. So there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. And I also had questions about, you know, who's going to make, who's going to make sure that this stuff is happening? Because I know, you know, no individual staff person wants to be the one to police their fellow staff person. They don't want to go and, they may not feel comfortable going up to their coworker and saying, hey, you're not wearing your mask properly or whatever, but it does sound like there's going to be a process in place where they can report that to their principal or assistant principal to help them with that so that there's a place to go if they feel like things are not being complied with. So I got a lot of those questions, and so I'm just repeating them. I got a lot of those questions completed with my conversation with Dr. Bailey and Dr. Stanton today, so I appreciate their time with that. But I do have some concerns because there's a couple of things that are concerning to me. The first is that I am concerned that we have no parameters for, and nothing that's saying that we're going to follow even these new metrics. For eight months, we said, okay, we used the metrics to determine when we went into that AB hybrid in fall. We waited until we got into that 7% before we agreed to go into that AB hybrid. And when we talk about hybrid, as was pointed out, we're at that point having smaller groups. So while the numbers are about the same, 50 to 60% of a campus saying they want to come back, the difference between October and what we're proposing here in March is instead of only having 25 to 30% of the kids in the class at a time, you're going to have the full 50-something to 60-something percent at one time. And I remember at that time, talking to Mr. Kramer, it was doable, but just barely making sure that there was six feet of space between desks and students with 20 to 30%. I do not understand or see how that's possible to have anything semblance to six feet of space in the classrooms when we have 60% capacity. So that would be a question of, for Mr. Kramer or somebody to get back to me on that. But before I take that answer, I will say that that is a concern of how we're going to maintain this space because regardless of mitigation factors, it just doesn't seem, and we're not requiring it, we're just saying when possible or as best as we can. My other concern is that what the CDC has made clear, and I'm quoting them there, is that where community transmission is high, risk is higher, and that's why they have that grid. We have failed in this document to say what our threshold is, will be. I know that we're assuming it's going to go down, but we were in this position in October. It went down, and then it went back up. In October, when we only had 20 or 30% onsite at a time, we were having outbreaks and classrooms having to be quarantined. Our neighbors, who were open with higher numbers, yes, they were largely successful, but we also know that they had campuses or classrooms that had to close down. We have two months left of school, and to think that we're going to, you know, remedy any kind of learning gap in two months is wonderful, as our educators are. I mean, they're going to be getting in, being crazy about being back on campus, getting used to this new routine, and then hopefully they'll do some, you know, their assessments before, or, you know, without any having to close or anything like that. So that's my other concern, is that we have no parameters to say like, hey, if we don't get to this level, or if we pop up to this level, we're going to, we're going to end. And so that would be my second question. Why can't we say if we hit up to this level, we're going to close it down? So I'll stop there. I do have more, but I want to be respectful of the fact that other board members may have questions, and I'll stop with those two questions. One, about the six feet and how we could possibly have that, and then two about the mitigation.
I might answer those, Ms. Whaley, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I don't know if Mr. Kramer's on the line or not, but our, the doability, when we talked and we had multiple committees, if you remember, in the fall, was around that 55 and 60%. If all of them were there, it wasn't at the 25%. I just want to clarify that. It was actually doable at, we worked really hard and Mike and his team went out, counted classrooms, did all that kind of stuff. And so the six feet is again, doable at roughly the 55 to 60%. That's why we showed you the numbers, because in the cases where it's above that, we're going to have to then work really, you know, on different methods and things like that to get those mitigation strategies going along. So that's the first one. And then I apologize, the second question was, forgive me?
The second question is, we've been really ambiguous of just saying, okay, it'll decrease. I took the parent test, there was two questions, or the parent survey, and it said, things are going down. If they go down, will you be traditional, which we had previously up until that point defined traditional as five days a week? Or will you be hybrid? And it didn't give any indication of metrics, but I think it would be sufficient to say that, you know, we've been telling them that traditional would happen at 5%. And so now for us to say, okay, we're going to go back to a traditional model. I understand the state recognizes that as a hybrid model because not 100%. But when we were talking about it for the last eight months, traditional to us was five days a week, the option to go five days a week. And so I don't understand how we can't still give those guidelines of, hey, these are the metrics and we're going to stick with them. And if we pop over this or if we don't get close to this, we're not going to open.
So in regards to that, as I mentioned, Maricopa County today and even with the CDC discussion, the mitigation strategies are their number one factor. The community risk, as you call it, or community spread was the second factor. And so, I mean, we are fortunate the numbers are coming down. So you're asking for those hard numbers. I think, as I mentioned to you today, and I'll say again here, is Dr. Bailey, is it going to work on the strategies being trained and then making sure that they're enforced through multiple checks and balances? But according to the CDC in Maricopa, you can actually remain open even in high transmission, although we're not there, with these mitigation strategies. So I don't have a producible number. I think if our numbers go back up, then we'd have to just look at the circumstance. Are mitigation strategies holding? Is our staffing, is our staffing okay, you know, that type of thing? Are there any, you know, outbreaks, et cetera? But yeah, the shift that happened from the fall, as they, even Maricopa said, they had these hard and fast numbers. They're now seeing the move to mitigation strategies being the first factor and then looking at, quote unquote, the community spread as another factor. But the mitigation has been where they've now been emphasizing.
Thank you. I'll defer to someone else for now.
Thank you. So Mrs. Giardi, you're next?
Oh, thank you, President Adams. I was just going to say with all of this information that was presented tonight, that it seems as if we've done everything we can to make it as safe as possible for the kids and the staff to come back. So I appreciate all your hard work and it looks like we have a lot of great things in place. I do know that there's been a shifting baseline over time and I think the thing that is important to keep in mind is that we also have thrown into the mix of all these numbers and so forth, the fact that the vaccines have come out. And not only have they kind of come out for our teachers and staff and so forth in our districts, but also for a lot of the family members, not all of them, we know that it's not equitable, but we know that a lot of people in the community who are elderly have been able to get the vaccine and so forth. So I think, as with every single thing with COVID, what was before is not the same as what is today or what will be tomorrow. And I do think the numbers are going down. I work in the medical field, I see it every day that there are just a huge number less people being tested and concerned and sick in the urgent care centers and so forth. I do understand Ms. Whaley's concerns and I think having a hard number is helpful and desirable, but I do know that from my own perception and perspective, that many things have been taken into account that weren't there in the fall, if that makes sense. So I do think throwing in the vaccines for the teachers and staff and so forth and the community makes a big difference and it will continue to in the next month before kids come back to school.
Thank you. Before I chime in, does anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you. Boy, I really, truly appreciate the comments that are being made. I'm going to echo Jenny's comments in regards to, it's about access to the vaccine, the decreasing case numbers and the research and data showing that rooms can be saved with the proper mitigation. The reality is, you know, this is a moving target. I mean, Dr. Fauci has been and continues to be, you know, the driving force and he's changing his tone where kids need to be back in school. You take a look at the governor, you take a look at the CDC, you take a look at the health, our health department, state health department, they are moving this number constantly. And right now, the, I believe we all feel with the shift that the community is taking towards get our children back into school. It's always been about the safety for our children and the safety for our staff. That does not change. The homework that's been done here, the work that has been put before us. Everybody involved in this is doing everything humanly possible to keep everyone safe. Those of our staff that have gone out and got their vaccinations, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is what's starting all this. We see the numbers coming down. Our parents, we all want our children back in that classroom. And I think that I am very, very comfortable with the direction that our administration and everybody involved is doing to make everyone safe. I was in a classroom today and I saw, it was a class of maybe eight or nine. Granted, it's not 20, but I was amazed at how everyone was spread out, how there were barriers in between. I'm not really sure that's what we're going to see with all classes, but I know that Mike's in there working on it, his team's working on it, the filtration systems that are coming onboard. Everything is being done and I think it's time that in the next couple of weeks for us to get our children back in that classroom. And I just can't say thank you enough for everything the staff is doing. I'm proud of everybody and what they're doing. But again, that chain is moving, they are moving the benchmarks all the time and the community is telling us we need to get our children back into school. We just need to do it safely. And again, I thank everybody who's getting a vaccination. I think it's amazing that you're all doing that. Are there any other questions before we move forward?
President Adams?
Yes, Ms. Whaley?
I do have a question. I didn't see anywhere, I saw a very brief thing on reporting, which is required to the Department of Health, but I didn't see anything regarding how will we report out infections? How will we report out when there's been contact? What's the criteria? I know previously it was like only if you were in contact with somebody for 15 minutes or more, but this plan doesn't include anything that talks about when an outbreak happens, what the criteria for closing that classroom or notifying families are?
Ms. Whaley, Mr. President, members of the audience. In regards to reporting, we do have current procedures where those that have been immediately contacted through contact tracing, they are, and by the way, Debbie and Beth did an amazing job of informing the families and the schools. And then Katie and her team do an incredible job with our staff. But we do the reporting when there's a, I mean, an outbreak is a two or more, people that are not related, familiar and things like that. And so in those cases, we work with Maricopa County. They actually help us determine when it's a quote unquote outbreak and then they have protocols and letters for what we have to do to inform those related to the outbreak. In the case of, if you were in close contact, we inform those that are directly there. And then, and I, Ms. Horton, you may be on the line too. I think we have other letters as well that we use, but we've been using those exactly for when we've had those small examples of outbreaks in our district or if somebody's come into close contact. I mean, so we do have those protocols already in place and they're being followed in regards to outbreak reporting and if you came in close contact to somebody.
So I also just want to point out, if you can go to the red, yellow, green, or red, yellow, red, blue, sorry, that's the other color. The new colors chart would be helpful.
He passed, Ms. Tucker, I believe. There.
Okay. So in there, it's still similar to kind of what we were before, where as high transmission is 10% or more and so on. I'm looking at the Maricopa County and CDC's recommended implementation, even with mitigation strategies. And it says that when you're in that 10% or 8 to 10% area for elementary school children, physical distancing of six feet or more is required and everywhere we put is when possible. The other thing that does say is for middle school students, when transmission is high, so 10% or more, virtual only instruction unless they can strictly implement all mitigation strategies. And again, we've seen that even our neighbor districts that were strictly adhering, I have to assume, I don't think they were kind of adhering. I'm assuming they all were doing as vigilantly as we were and they were having outbreaks and closures. So I guess I just am still, I understand that the mitigation strategies, you're telling us, they're saying that's number one, but they're not saying that transmission levels are a non-factor. It's a secondary factor, but it's a non-factor. And so what we know also, they say, is if even one of those are in the red, that you should go with the higher. So if one's red and one's blue or one's red and one's yellow, you should go with the higher one. That was also in the CDC's report. So I guess what I'm saying is our inability to say that we won't also take into account and follow those guidelines and we're going to go beyond that even with, if we go into the high transmission, that makes me uncomfortable because it doesn't give any kind of expectation to our families about when is too much. And we've asked these people to commit to it and to not change. Now, I'm assuming they can change, but we know that that causes a lot of issues. So again, that's just my concern, I'm one of five, but I do still think there's risks. I also know that there is disparities. Yes, our teachers are primarily being able to get this vaccine. However, we do also know that when you have the vaccine, you're still able to transmit it to other people. So if our staff are getting the vaccine, they're going out and living their lives and they bring the COVID into our schools, even though they will have no symptoms because they do not have any, they have not gotten COVID, they can still transport COVID. And that is a concern of mine as well because our kids can then transport that back to their homes as well. So I'm just concerned with the transmission levels and without us being clear on when is too much, it just makes me uncomfortable. So that's all I'll have to say on the matter.
Can I make one?
Yes, please, go ahead.
And I know Ms. Whaley mentioned, I think she has the CDC up. This is the document they had today for us and I just was looking at what you're saying. It says, in those substantial or high, it says, physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible. So I wonder if the CDC, this is Maricopa County document that they gave us today. And so it's interesting that this one says physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible. So that's the first thing where you were saying it was required or I think it said required or mandatory. This one actually says.
It was CDC as of the 18th, but it could have changed.
This is actually Maricopa as of the 16th and then 21st. So I'll have to go back and make sure that Maricopa's, I'll check their document. But they're saying to the greatest extent possible, at least our local Maricopa County health officials. And then the second one, I cannot speak for the recent outbreaks at a couple of the closer, shall we say, nearby districts, but I will say that when Debbie Burdick, superintendent of Cave Creek, talked to the ASA about it, she did say, and that's why we're talking about enforcement, by the way, you've got to enforce masks, universal wearing, you've got to do hand sanitizing, you've got to do the six feet where possible, you've got to have those north, south, kids are only walking in certain directions. When people loosened those, since you were saying, I can't speak for the nearby district that had two high schools that closed, but what Debbie said was, when they first had it in Cave Creek and they did have outbreaks, they said it was because they were not following those recommended strategies. So I know that our team are going to be absolutely mandating, as you heard, we're going to have some double checks with our facilities plus our assistant principals and principals to make sure that those five strategies are being followed. And again, I'll have to check on that version versus this one because it's a little bit different.
Thank you. Mr. Dutchten, do you know what Glendale's plans are, out of curiosity?
Glendale Union, Glendale L., I'm sorry.
Glendale Union.
I believe Glendale Union is also targeting the 22nd as well. Last time I talked to Brian, I think they're having a conversation this evening. And I think they're planning to make some kind of announcement tomorrow, but I, you know, I cannot say what they're having at their particular meeting, but I do believe they are trying to target the same date. Their numbers today also dropped significantly, Mr. Adams.
Okay. You know, nobody can predict the future and I think that we've done a really fine job of adapting and pivoting when necessary. And again, I think it's a monumental task with what everybody's taken on and it is about the safety of our staff and our community. And, but right now, with these benchmarks moving minute by minute, just even with the conversation with Ms. Whaley, talking about what the CDC said yesterday and what it says today, 48 hours, it changed. So you know what, I'm going to yield real quick to, Lindsey, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, thank you, President Adams. I just wanted to say that our students on our campuses, and my kids have been going to the onsite, and I wanted to just say, our staff is doing such a great job with those mitigation strategies with our kids and I really just applaud that effort and I think that's what's going to continue to keep our kids safe. I also just think that it's such a blessing that we're giving our families options, right? So if you're not ready, if you have, you know, circumstances that make it not safe for you, you can send your kid to an online program that is live teachers. That's amazing that our kids have the option to have live teachers, the same curriculum, the same learning, but that for our families that are ready to come back and feel comfortable with those mitigation strategies and, you know, whatever the transmission level is or in our communities, we can give them that option as well. So I just wanted to, you know, say that in my experience, those strategies are working really hard in our elementary schools to keep our kids safe and they're doing a great job. And I just applaud again the efforts of our team. This is an impossible place to be in, so thank you, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Ms. Pearson, that was excellent. You know, from my perspective, it's customer service that we have those choices, that the parents can do what they wish and we have those capabilities. I'd like to go ahead and again, I have, if everybody's okay with it, I have the agenda in front of me and with no objections, I'd like to move this, I'd like to call the question and move it forward. Unless somebody else would like to make the motion?
No, but can we do a roll call, vote?
Be happy to, thank you. Okay, with that being said, I recommend that the governing board accept the revision to the WESD Return to Learn Reopening School Plan for the 2021 school year and authorize the superintendent to modify, alter, or change the plan as needed. And may I have a second, please?
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker, would you be kind enough to give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, President Adams. Ms. Jenny Abbott-Giardi?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Whaley?
I'd like to explain my vote, please.
Please.
I will vote aye. However, I do want to say that I do recognize that there are staff that may be required to show up that may not to. And I do recognize that we have an obligation not only to our parents and our staff, but the surrounding community to try to reduce and do our part to reduce spread. And I believe that our staff will do the best as possible, but we are human. And so for me, it is still a reluctant. And I believe that our staff will do the best as possible, but we are human. And so for me, I'm, it is still a reluctant, but I I will recognize that people are ready to have that choice. And so I do vote aye, but I wanted to to clarify that it is with reservation.
Mr. Adams, your vote?
I'm going to explain my vote, please. And with that, I have all, I have confidence in our staff and and our administration. The fact that the motion even says, you know, that the superintendent will modify, alter or change the plan as needed is put into play, I I vote aye. So with all ayes, the motion passes. And before I leave, real quick, I just want to mention that again, we will be going back to in-person board meetings starting March 11th. Unfortunately, when we're going to be, we're limited to going back to mitigation. Only the staff and the board will be in attendance. Anybody who wishes to attend, it'll be livestreamed. So unfortunately, we can't have group because we just don't know how many people would show up. So again, we're we're going by the mitigation guidelines. And Dr. Stanton, I would, I'm sure you're going to put out a communicate on on how that will all work. With that, that brings us to request, request for future report and agenda items. Anybody have anything?
President Adams, I'd like to request a future agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request an a report on our recruitment strategies and also on our applicant EEOC information.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Adams, I have one.
Mr. Herrera.
Hey, can we get an update on the 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 Royal Bill and then also the 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 towers, the cell phone towers? I know we had some issues with those last year and we had some updates for those, specifically the ones at Saguaro and Desert foothills. So can we get an update on that? Email is fine when Kathy, when you get a chance. And then also if we can get a a trust board, the, the, you know, if we can get, if we can get a possible agenda item on searching for the the Metaflex plan for health benefit for employees, we could look at that also as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, that brings us to a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Hey, board, great. Listen, everybody, staff, board, thank you so much for your time. This is going to work. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening. Take care, everybody.
Thank you, good night.